Everyone, welcome to the New Market. March 1st Town Council Meeting, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:01.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, I was also gonna...
Okay.
I'd like to have a moment of silence, please, for a long-time town employee and volunteer, Isabel Donovan. If we could, for a moment. I'd like to welcome to the Planning Board tonight, thank you for coming. We appreciate it very much, we're gonna have a joint meeting. As far as public...
I'd like to make a motion to seal the non-public minutes from the 6 o'clock non-public RSA 91A32A personnel.
Second.
Do I have a second? Please call a roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
So, welcome to the Planning Board again. We were gonna do this downstairs, because we only thought we were gonna have three people, so it's nice that we have four people and Diane, so thank you all for coming. As far as public forum, is that... We're not gonna... We're gonna do the public hearing on the...
Yeah, by law, you have to do the public hearing separately on the ordinance.
Okay, well, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to the ordinance Lots of people. Seeing none, we'll close public comment on the ordinance at 7:03. And I would like to ask Diane from the Planning Board, they're here tonight, just so everybody knows, regarding the joint... The zoning changes that are currently before the council. And I was assuming that Diane was gonna give an overview, or Eric, or any of the above? Okay. So, if you'd like, take it away, Diane.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the council, it's nice to meet you this evening. We have some zoning changes before you that have been recommended by the Planning Board. I thought I would go over them real quickly, and kind of give you some context of why we're doing these. As you know, one of the charges of the Planning Board is to adopt a master plan, and also to recommend zoning changes that will help guide the development of the community. And the Planning Board, last fall, set up a subcommittee to start looking at some of the zoning changes in relation to the recommendations that have come out of the Economic Development Committee. And also, there were some other changes that we started to look at, one of which is something that's being mandated, so to speak, by the state concerning accessory dwelling units. So, we're here this evening to present them, and to explain them, and to answer any questions that the board, the Town Council may have. I wanted to mention that the subcommittee met probably four or five times over the course of the fall, and we actually had a meeting last evening. And we also had a public work session with the Planning Board, and these changes were vetted through a public hearing on January 24th, and the Planning Board unanimously voted to recommend that they come to the Town Council for your consideration. The first one is sort of a housekeeping measure, and it has to do with non-conforming uses. And this has to do with the so-called grandfather clause, which is in the town zoning ordinance. And basically, if you have a non-conforming use that doesn't meet the current zoning standards, it can continue indefinitely unless it's abandoned, or suspended, or the use stops for whatever purpose. And in the town's zoning regulations right now, and the language is written right there on the second page of your resolution, it's before your ordinance, it's before you, there isn't really a timeframe that's given for how long a property has to be abandoned, or a use has to be abandoned, before the owner loses their grandfathered rights. And so, this was a problem that came up at several zoning board meetings over the past few years, and they had actually suggested that the Planning Board consider putting a timeframe in there, so everybody knows upfront what that time is. And so, we have crafted some language that recommends that this period of abandonment, if you will, be established at two years. So, if somebody decides that they want to leave their junkyard, and they move to Florida for vacation, and decide to retire there indefinitely, and two years goes by, then the junkyard loses its status as a grandfathered use. And then, any subsequent use of that property has to be in compliance with the current zoning, not the zoning that was in effect at the time. So, that's the first change. I think that's pretty straightforward, I've provided you with some resource materials to review, if you really wanna learn more about grandfathering, there was a piece that was put out by the local government center, and explains the premise of this. And of course, this is something that was vetted through the courts, and it was deemed to be a reasonable request. So, that's the first change. The second change has to do with accessory apartments. And New Market has allowed accessory apartments on the books for several years, with the most recent update back in 2004. And recently, there was a state law that passed that it really is directed to all communities, not to specific communities. But there are some communities in the state that just outright don't allow the opportunity for an accessory apartment. And just to give you an overview, an accessory apartment is a small apartment that's available in a single-family home, it's accessory, and it's secondary to the primary use of the property. And many people here in New Market have availed themselves of the opportunity to have accessory apartments for an in-law situation, or, you know, perhaps there's a disabled child who is living in a home and needs their own facility, whatever, et cetera. And... But anyway, so, under this state law, we're required to bring our local ordinance into compliance with the state law. And so, what we're recommending this evening is just making the necessary changes to bring it into the state law, so that somebody couldn't come along and preempt, if you will, our local zoning ordinance. If a community decides to do nothing, somebody can conceivably come in and say, "Hey, I'm entitled to an accessory apartment in our home, and you don't allow it, so under the state law, I can go ahead and do that without your blessing," so to speak. Just to give you an overview, too, that the zoning board of adjustment approves accessory apartments through a special use process, and there's certain criteria that have to be met in order for them to award them. And so, what we're changing here is just some of the conditions, so that they're in sync with the state requirements.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would it be appropriate to do it during the...
Yeah, certainly. Please do.
Most of what you said I agree with, except for the part about you're increasing the square footage.
That's something that the Planning Board had recommended, that's not something that's mandated or anything. The state law says you can establish minimums, you can establish maximums, but you cannot have a maximum that's less than 750 square feet. And we went through and had legal counsel help us with the interpretation, because there's some vague language there.
Repeat that last part, I apologize.
The state law says you can have a minimum, and you can have a maximum, but the maximum cannot be less than 750.
So, it's minimum of 750?
Right.
And now, it's 800?
No, the maximum is 800. So, basically, we're saying... And there's one other reason for increase.
Well, that's what I said, that's what I meant. New Market is 800 now.
That's the maximum.
It is currently 800. The proposal is that it go to 1,000, and we weren't required to go more than 750.
Right, correct. Deal? That's correct.
I got it.
Part of the reason for it is, in this new state law, some communities have limited their accessory apartments to just a studio or one bedroom, which ours currently has for stipulation. And they are saying, "No, you have to allow for a two-bedroom." And I think that envisions a situation where there might be a family with a disabled, you know, member, or a dependent child, whatever, and that they should have that opportunity. Also, this part of the impetus for this has... Comes out of the whole idea of workforce housing, and some communities haven't provided their fair share in the state, so this is kind of viewed as an opportunity for people to make some modifications, to allow a wider range of housing opportunities for families of all sorts, and not just focusing on higher-income folks.
Okay.
So, I'll just give you that context, I mean, that's part of what the law was all about.
I kinda got that.
Okay.
What I... Since you're here, because we're gonna... I'd be voting on this after, so I just felt I'd get your input.
Yeah, well, that's... We wanted to give you an overview.
I guess my question is, if the minimum is 750, which is fine, that's state law, and we're going to 1,000, what was the rationale to... I mean, this certainly isn't my benefit, but I'm sitting there thinking, if someone has an 1,800-square-foot house, which mine used to be, when I lived on Smith Garrison, adding 1,000 square feet, you know, is fairly substantial potential, it's almost like, you know, 30%, more a house. So, why go from 800 to 1,000? What was the logic?
And I think part of the rationale was, under the state law, now we have to provide the opportunity for two-bedroom apartments, so why don't we give them a little bit of extra square footage, so that it can be a more, you know, usable configuration? So, it really was sort of a practical matter. If you have to have two bedrooms, then we'll let you have another 200 square feet, so we can make it a more livable situation for the family. I think it might...
That's exactly right.
And if... Yeah, please, any of the Planning Board members, if you wanna jump in, if I'm...
Oh, yes.
If you have something to add, that'd be great. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Levy?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, and I appreciate the thing about workforce housing in a lot of towns, though, I think New Market is way beyond a reasonable amount of workforce. That's the only part of this that I had some concerns about.
Yeah.
Because honestly, I thought 800 square feet was a reasonable addition. And, by the way, just to be clear, this isn't necessarily for a family member, anybody can just take a home, you know, their home.
That's correct.
And say, "I wanna do... I wanna rent out an apartment," theoretically.
That's right.
And so, you know, my takeaway was, I thought, and again, this is not in my best interest, because, you know, I thought 1,000 square feet was pretty substantial.
The debating... Well, the Planning Board debated it, and we went back and forth and back and forth, but at the end of the day, it was consensus of 1,000, so we accept it, the board members had some likelihood.
I would say there was compromise, is why.
It was definitely a compromise. Some of us wanted a percentage.
I apologize.
So, I just wanna...
New Market wasn't so heavy on multifamily, I wouldn't be raising this, but we have a pretty substantial...
And you're not going to...
So...
It has to be owner-occupied.
Yeah, I was just gonna...
The apartments have to be owner-occupied in order to have an accessory apartment, and it has to be contained or attached to the existing house. That's right.
Yeah, so just, I'm not sure if that was clear. One... So, you can create an accessory apartment under the state law, the... You do not have to occupy the primary residence, the owner. But on the lot, the primary... The owner has to live on that lot, whether they choose to live within the primary, you know, dwelling, or they could move to the accessory dwelling, and rent out the primary dwelling. The issue, too, that we did... I mean, we had a lot of debate on the size. You know, there was the idea, as other communities do, where they... As your example, Mr. Levy, Chairman Levy, is, you know, to limit it to a certain size based upon the primary dwelling structure, 25%, 20%, whatever that percentage would be. But yet, you would have to retain the minimum of 750. So, there... When they talk about a compromise, it was definitely a compromise on the Planning Board, because that was one idea versus others that were kicked around, up to 1,200 square Well, the other thing to put into perspective, is a lot of times, the Planning Board is looking at zoning relative to what's happening at the zoning board of adjustments, and the number of variances that are being, you know, granted relative to... Or what cases they're granting variances, you know, for. And certainly, accessory apartments, they go to the zoning board for approval, but a lot of them are also going to the zoning board for variances.
Counselor Thompson?
Couple of questions, if I can, on the abandonment issue. Two years. Why not... A, why not one? And B, why would it not say, or change in ownership? At some point, let's say I have a junk... Let's say I have a junkyard, and it's grandfathered, and whatever, and I sell the property, why would the grandfathering still apply with a new owner?
Because zoning and the grandfathering, the vesting of rights under that clause in the state law, is something that goes with the land.
Right.
And it can't... It does... Is not dependent upon the use, I mean, in the ownership of the land.
Why is the feeling one year, or two years is better?
We had a lot of discussion on that, too.
We're going to Florida for winter and not coming back, why is it gonna take two years of sitting there?
We thought that, you know, a year, it was what we originally had started out with. We thought that, you know, a year goes by really fast, and if there's issues with insurance claims that have to be processed, or...
Probate, or anything like that, that could take time.
Yeah, some kind of hardship.
It's not just abandonment, it's discontinuation of that use.
Right.
Right.
Or it could be a non-conforming structure, because it's non-conforming, because it's, you know, within a setback, and there's a fire, burns down, they're litigating with insurance.
What's the downside to putting it to a year, and then, look, if there's stuff caught in some litigious something, something, and something, that they let us know?
They'd have to go...
And you give a waiver that way, versus waiting two years, and heaven knows what happened. I'm just weighing the...
Yeah.
They'd have to go to the zoning board for variance, in order to extend that.
I think we did suggest language that maybe might make it at the discretion of the Planning Board, if there are extenuating circumstances, that might warrant it to go to 24 months.
Rather than wait two years for everybody, at which point, two years, okay, one year may go fast, two years is a long time to have a property sitting there, doing nothing. And I think we've worked really hard in town to clean things up, and keep things moving along, and not have abandoned properties, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, worst case. So, I'm just wondering... I think I'd be more comfortable with one year, with a variance to extend it, you know, based on the circumstance, rather than saying two years, it's just my personal preference. On the accessory dwellings, where now, by state law, it needs to say one or more persons?
Because one or two bedrooms. It has to be one or two bedrooms.
Occupied by...
It could be any number of people.
Independent living facilities for one or more persons is the language that you're proposing to put in there.
That's the state law, that's the statute.
That's a statute.
That's another way of saying, there has to be a person there.
Up to how many people? When does it stop?
There's no limitations. That's part of the... That's part of the reason the state passed the law, is to stop towns from being overly restrictive, in their opinion.
14 people could live in there, if they can manage to fit into 1,000 square feet.
They can do it, and meet the health code and everything. They could. They...
At which point, the burden on the systems is, you know, I would think, a consideration, but it sounds like there's little we can do, because that is state language, correct?
Well, it's also no different than if you have a single-family 800-square-foot house, or 1,000, 1,200-square-foot house, there's no limitation on... Other than, from a facet system perspective.
No, but where this is attached to or contained with already a primary dwelling, where it could already have 14 people in it on one...
That's true.
On one, whatever.
That's correct.
At one point, you know, that... Well, if it's... This could be overburdening a whole bunch of stuff, never mind, I mean, not for nothing, but if somebody, if two people move in that have 12 children, I mean, here we go... Here we go around again, and then I'm worried about density, and strength, and whatever. So, just input there. I was unclear, I know that you mentioned it, I was unclear from reading this, that the property owner must live on the premises.
Yes.
I understood that it said in here, it didn't matter whether they lived in the accessory apartment, or in the primary dwelling.
Correct.
But perhaps you could tell me where, in these articles, it says that the owner is required to be on the property?
Okay, let me refer you to the... There was a packet that came out, I believe, on Thursday, Mr. Coria sent it out to everyone, with your backup information for tonight's meeting. And part of that packet included a copy of the state RSA.
Oh, oh, oh.
RSA 67472. Do you all have a copy of that?
Certification, I didn't send it.
Well, not Steve, I'm sorry. Wendy put it together with the packet online.
I saw it on the way up for me.
I'm... Forgive me, I need to...
I'm looking for which page it is.
Oh, it's three.
Page three, item three, it says, "One of the dwelling units must be owner-occupied."
One second.
Yep.
Up top, the three up top. Owner-occupied. Okay.
And I have a copy of the state law, if you'd like to have that for reference?
No, it's okay. I mean, again, there was a lot to get through, for those of us that are reading this part time. So, it's in...
It's number six.
It's in six. Yeah. So, it... But that, to me, says may require owner occupancy, not must.
No. This says, "One of the dwelling units must be owner-occupied." Must be.
But you can't specify which one, what the state law says.
I'm reading that completely differently than you do.
No, I actually think that Amy's right.
I'm looking at... I'm looking at our...
Of the packet.
Page... We're looking at... It's in the packet, it's 18 of 55, and it says in the RSA, "A municipality may require owner-occupy."
Yeah.
Well, currently, we require owner-occupy, and see, I think we were just...
So, it's a choice. I don't think we were gonna change.
It is a choice.
Yes.
If somebody chooses, we can't tell them which one to do, but this leaves it completely up to the municipality, as far as whether it's owner-occupied or not.
That's right.
Yes. And we're saying it needs to be.
Yeah, and I think the Planning Board's recommending that it stay the way it is, that it has to be.
Okay. And one more little bit, at this point, if we are a minimum of 750 and a maximum of 1,000 square feet...
No, it's 300.
What?
A minimum of 3...
The minimum-maximum by state law, believe... We went around and rounded on this, but the minimum-maximum is 750 feet. You cannot have a maximum size that's less than 750. That's according to the RSA.
That's the new law.
That's the new law. You can't have a... We did not have to change...
Right, okay, so pick at that, okay.
We didn't have to change, because we had 800. We could have left it at 800, we could have reduced it to 750. Instead, we chose to raise it to 1,000.
Right. Okay. All right, so I just... I read that wrong, and it wasn't a minimum. Anyway, once we get to that, what is the difference between me taking my 1,900-square-foot house and turning... I'm just gonna pick at that one. 800 square feet of it into what I'm gonna call an accessory apartment, versus the two-family homes that are on South Road? What differentiates a home with an accessory apartment that has all these other things, and two bedrooms, and 14 people could live in it?
Because zoning...
And what we're saying with our ordinance, we wanna see that there's a principal residence, which is the predominant use of the property, and we wanna see that there's owner... You know, that there's an owner-occupied unit to establish some continuity, so it just doesn't become a rental property.
But let's say I have one of the houses on Pick One, Beach Street, South Street, whatever.
A duplex.
Practically speaking, there's no difference.
So, you could have two separate owners of the duplex, you could have renters in both sides of the duplex, there's no statute to prohibit any of that.
Right, but that same house, if I own a duplex on South Street, and I live downstairs, and I rent out upstairs...
It's a duplex.
Why is that different from the accessory apartment?
Because that... A duplex would probably be subject to greater density requirements, more lot size. You know, we have so many units per acre.
So, why would I have my home...
There's a semantic difference in that. One's a duplex, one has two living units, but it's a single-family with an accessory apartment, it's a semantic difference. And it's based on ownership. A duplex, if it's zoned for a duplex, or it's grandfathered in, you can rent out both sides. In this, you can't. But in both cases, you have two... You have two separate...
The house could look exactly the same.
Exactly.
Then you're taxed differently, too, because you're taxed as a duplex...
Right.
Versus a single-family with an accessory apartment.
So, basically, it's more... So, if I owned a duplex, why wouldn't I come down... I mean, I'm just being... Why wouldn't I come down and say, "Look, I have a duplex over here, but actually, it's really, it's my home with an accessory apartment upstairs," and change the tax designation? I'm just, I don't always understand.
It's more valuable as a duplex.
Yours is actually more onerous for a homeowner that has a duplex, that's taxed at a higher rate, and has more restrictions put on them because of densities. Whereas, if you have an accessory apartment added to your property, you just go get your accessory apartment, there's no density requirements, all you have to do is have two additional parking spaces. So, technically, this accessory ordinance is creating...
But if I had one of those duplexes... What's to stop me from one of those duplexes from coming to you guys and saying, "Hey, look, I wanna be assessed as a primary, as an accessory apartment, because I wanna drop my tax bill."
If you meet the requirements, and you go to the zoning board, and they approve it as an accessory dwelling, then you could. You'd have to meet the criteria, you'd have to have the two parking spaces, and, you know, the other things that we talked about.
Which I wouldn't need to have if I had a duplex parking on your own.
Right. Well, you would... No, not necessarily, you wouldn't, because it wouldn't be subject to site plan review. So, there's more... In some ways, there's more restrictions for the accessory apartment.
It's highly unlikely we have any duplexes in New Market with a duplex unit, each individual unit is less than 1,000 square feet, or our current zoning, the 800.
All I know is several.
And also, Amy, if you go to...
They're not in the New Village, because those are mostly three-bedroom duplexes, two floors each.
Right. They are not in the New Village.
When you go to the ZBA, they don't have to follow the requirements that we have for a maximum of 1,000 square feet. They can approve any size they want. They just actually approve a 2,000-square-foot unit as an accessory apartment on Bay Grove. So, it isn't... If it goes to ZBA, you know, if they feel you meet the requirements, it doesn't have to be 1,000 feet or under.
Can we move this a little bit?
Yeah. No, those are good questions, Amy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was getting my questions answered.
No, that's okay. It's okay. I just wanted everybody to get a question, and then we can keep going. Counselor Pike, and then Nazaro.
Yeah, I just want one comment to see, again, we were responding to state law on this process, and I thought it was interesting that the state allows you to have a detached accessory apartment. We chose not to... We don't... We were not required to allow detached accessory apartments, but it makes it hard to understand how your zoning restrictions even matter, if you start allowing detached accessory apartments. But that is part of the language in the RSA.
Have that option.
And someone could, not to interrupt, but someone could go to the ZBA if they wanted that, and they could make a claim, correct? They could do it now, they could do it now. That's right.
They could apply for variance, and if they felt they met the criteria, they could grant it.
And I don't wanna get into it, because Counselor Nazaro's up, but, you know, I think if we have 800, you know, personally, I think you guys know where my head is a little bit, I think 800 is appropriate, and it's certainly working, we're not draconian. And if somebody really had a germane reason for wanting more, they're not limited to
not limited to going to ZBA, and I just wanted to get that clarified. Am I correct?
It's an option that they can go to ZBA.
Constable Nazarow.
So the old language said one bedroom.
Yes, that is.
And now the state law is requiring two bedrooms, hence the upping of the two hundred square feet.
Up to two.
Up to two, yeah. But the state law says you have to allow them to have up to two. So the extra two hundred feet is to make it for the fact that the state's now saying, like, you have to let them have at least two bedrooms, as opposed to the one that we have had up to this point.
Correct.
Makes sense to me. The second thing is just to clarify something. The whole nonconformity thing, and the abandoned conversation, like, we're not setting up, like, anything about, like, what's considered an abandoned property. All this is saying is how long the nonconforming, like, is allowed to stick with a piece of property, which is two years after it's left. So it's not, yeah.
We had somebody who came forward, and I won't mention the location or the owner, and they had this apartment that was down the basement that was occupied thirty years ago, and has not, had not been occupied since. It was vacant and abandoned, and they wanted to reestablish the apartment. And first of all, the zoning board had done its time trying to establish whether there were even grandfathered rights there or not, because there were no real clear records that anyone lived there. But that, we went around, and we, the zoning board went around and around on that. They finally, I forget how it was actually resolved. But they, they had testimony from different people, including the neighbors who had lived in the neighborhood for a while. But it's just to help make it easier to administer the ordinance for the board, and for the town administrator.
Given that abandonment is more likely than not going to be probably from legal issues, like, it seems to me that with, you know, speed of our justice system, that two years is completely reasonable for, like, someone who might be embroiled in it, before, like, all of a sudden, we pull the, they're nonconforming out from underneath them.
I kind of thought it was too. I didn't at first, I was for a year, but when they said, you know, this, and things can get tied up, so I think two years is appropriate. And then too, if we ever do anything with the property maintenance, to your concerns, Amy, it isn't that. It's going to be abandoned and look horrible. So if you get the property maintenance in, the Cohen force will have some authority to go in and say, it still has to be cleaned up until you rectify whatever situation you're in.
Yeah, or just a safety thing. I mean, never mind looks from the street, but let's say if you go in and there's a hole in the floor, I mean, I don't know.
And also, another point I'd like to bring out is that, of the old accessory apartment, the last sentence under purpose, and Amy, we touched on that in the last meeting, about children of school age and so forth. And the last, it says the small apartments and all this stuff. Here, to balance this, the number of bedrooms and accessory apartments is severely limited to prevent excessive growth in the number of school-aged children. You can't use that. You can't say that.
It's all been removed, I saw.
Yes, yeah.
Well, we're suggesting it be removed.
Yeah, you can't use that anymore. But in that light, like I mentioned to Eric on the way in tonight, on planning board, when an accessory apartment was approved by the ZBA, the owners of the accessory apartment come into planning board for waiver, and with the impact fees, and the highest impact fee was the way, was the school portion, I think it's about three thousand dollars, but here to water, toilets, and so forth. And in my mind, if we can't use that, if it's up to a thousand square feet, if it's two bedrooms, and we can't say anything about school-aged children, then nobody can come to the planning board and ask for a waiver from the impact fee for school-aged children. So if you put an accessory apartment in, you're going to have to pay all the impact fees.
You're going to have an impact fee, which is the whole point of why we did. Okay, all right.
And over the years, I've done a lot of stuff with people that have had properties that have been deemed to be abandoned, and two years goes pretty quickly. If somebody leaves you a house, and you have two siblings, and they're both in California, and you're fighting with what you're going to do with it, two years goes awful quickly before you, you know, get to a resolution. So that was my thoughts for the two years, and I think everybody kind of agreed that two years is a reasonable time, so.
I think that's fair. Just for clarification, please, if someone owns a duplex and they want to do an accessory apartment, could, can they do that?
No.
Okay, so the duplex is already sort of eliminated that alternative.
Right, it's only allowed within a single-family home attached to a.
Correct, yes.
Good question.
We've heard that too.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to proceed? That's okay.
I'm pretty much finished with the.
That is. Didn't mean to bang you over the head with those, but I figured we might as well.
That's what we're here for, is to answer your questions.
We covered just about everything.
Yes.
Yeah, we took a lot of the language right out of the state law and plugged it in, so that somebody couldn't argue that it's not consistent. So hopefully, it'll be, you know, a workable ordinance when it is asked.
I did have a question, but I think you've answered it. I thought the way I read the state law, or somewhere in this, lots of pages that we got, it stated something to the effect that the property, or that the apartment had to be on the same parcel.
Yeah.
And I'm like, well, how can it be part of the same building and not in the same parcel? But you clarified that, meaning you, you as a planning board are recommending, although we could theoretically change that.
Correct.
You're recommending to keep any accessory apartment within the confines of that home, correct?
Or in addition to.
Or in addition to the home, right.
Yeah, meaning connected.
Connected.
So they don't, so the home isn't, you know, on this particular area, and then they put a.
Somebody doesn't turn a shed into an accessory apartment.
And I agree with that. I think that's fine.
And again, with the size requirements for a thousand square feet, it wasn't eight hundred, now it's a thousand. The ZBA's not stuck to that, and they have also approved separate pieces of property.
So they can, they can.
Separate buildings.
They've done that as well. So it isn't, they can go to the ZBA.
So just to wrap that up, for clarification, if we stayed with eight hundred, the homeowner still has the latitude to go to the ZBA and get permission to add on, for whatever reason or rationale they have.
Right.
And the same goes for.
Separate units.
Somebody fills a barn, and they want to put an apartment upstairs, or a caregiver or caretaker, whatever, they can do that.
Okay.
Right, any other questions? Was there anything else?
Well, that concludes the section on what's being proposed before this evening, for which we just got public here, to help clarify.
Well, since there's no more questions, Mr. Counsel.
Were we going to talk about the other?
Yeah, I was going to proceed, I just wanted to make sure there was.
Were you going to say something?
I didn't know what, whether we wanted to.
The status of the land use chapter, do you want to go into that now?
Yeah, and I, what I'd like to do to start out is just kind of give you an overview of that, and then we can talk about what we've done, some progress we've made, and moving forward with some of those recommendations. As, as we've talked about earlier, the planning board is charged with updating the master plan, and every year, the planning board tries to do one chapter. And last year, the planning board updated the future land use chapter, and it was adopted in July two thousand sixteen. And it was adopted after two or three public hearings, and considerable input from the public. And it was based on the input that we had from our visioning session in two thousand fifteen. Some of you attended that. I know, this time goes by fast. And also, you know, we received some data.
I said, two years.
It's been two years, I know, in the making. And also, the recommendations taken into consideration, some recommendations that came from the Economic Development Committee, who worked extensively on some zoning recommendations over the course of two or three years, correct me if I don't have the timeframe, and worked with two very qualified planning consultants from Massachusetts.
I didn't have Gray here when we started.
What?
I had him.
I didn't have Gray here.
Hi, Mr. Levy, he's great here today. But anyway, having said that, I just want to just go over the recommendations so you get it. And I'm not going to go into any detail, and I'm sure we can get into that at the discussion. But one of the first recommendations that came out of the future land use plan was to establish a continuing care retirement community in New Market as an overlay to the B-three zone, which is our business zone, which is off of Route one fifty-two. And the area where there's several gravel pits that are currently active pits, and perhaps will soon be abandoned or discontinued. And the concept was that there would be an overlay district attached to the B-three zone that's out there, and that a developer could come in and submit an application for a conditional use permit based on a master plan, and that they would be able to build a continuing care retirement community, which is a retirement community for persons over age fifty-five, and it would allow people, residents, to age in place. So as people progress in their elder years, they could move from perhaps an independent living situation to perhaps assisted housing, if they had greater need for care, nursing care. And in some instances, it could be a more specialized nursing care facility for people with memory impairment issues or Alzheimer's. And the concept being that people wouldn't be moved around. They could stick their roots and be at least the same place for a good, good number of years, and receive the care they need as they progressed in age. So that was the first recommendation. The second recommendation concerned property off of New Road, and recommended an assisted living overlay district on properties that are now currently owned by the town, the so-called Wilson Property and Ham Property, which is property which is east of the railroad and west of New Road. And the recommendation was that there would be an overlay district there as well, which would be specifically for assisted living, which is more the specialized care with some skilled nursing.
Dementia nursing, dementia nursing.
Dementia as well.
A higher level of.
Right. And of course, part of the rationale for that, it would be a use that wouldn't generate a lot of traffic, because folks, you know, would probably be driven to the site and what have you. So that was the second recommendation. The third, which came from the planning board, was to establish an overlay district along the Route one oh eight corridor, and to introduce some architectural and historic design guidelines to help assure that any future development in that area would be in keeping with the architectural and historic character of the town. And it was also, this of course includes our downtown, in recognition that the town has made, and development community has made, some extensive improvements in the downtown in investments over the last five, ten years. We want to make sure that those investments are protected, and that somebody doesn't come in and build something that's totally inappropriate or contrary to the.
Out of character.
Out of character, thank you, Rosie. So that was the third recommendation. Fourth has to do with concerns about coastal climate change and the potential for increased flooding in the future due to sea level rise. And we have actually worked with the Regional Planning Commission and identified here in New Market some areas that twenty, twenty-five, fifty, hundred years out, may be in fact prone to flooding because of what's, what's happening. It's a global issue, and it's happening definitely in the seacoast. There's recently been a climate change report that's come out of the state with some recommendations, recommendations for communities on how they can be proactive and plan for the future, just to protect the infrastructure that we have. So it might mean increasing the size of culverts, so that roads don't get flooded out in the future, that kind of thing. So that was the fourth recommendation. The others, I'll just kind of breeze through, get into the extensive discussion, but there's recommendations to enhance our shoreline protection requirements in town, our stormwater management regulations in town, which is a mandate that has been actually approved recently, where we have to come into compliance with the so-called MS four program. The next recommendation concerns property maintenance and junkyard, junkyards. And Chairman Bottomin provided you with a letter, I think it was in January, and suggested that after we discussed it, as the planning board discussed it, it was decided it was more of an administrative matter. But what the recommendation is, is that a committee be set up, perhaps by the town council, to include perhaps some planning board members and the building official, and to look at the feasibility of implementing some of these codes, and to develop a comprehensive program for regulating, we already have a state law on junkyards, but to really beef up our enforcement on those issues. And so that was the seventh recommendation. We only have one more, and that's perhaps one of the most important, is modifications to our zoning to implement the recommendations that came out of the Economic Development Committee. And that looks at things such as expanding or removing some permitted uses within the business zone, so that they're more compatible. And we also talked about the CCRC and the overlay district for assisted living, and those are part of those recommendations. So having said that.
Good job.
I would like to just kind of maybe open it up to a discussion as to what we have been able to do. We have submit, we have a committee, and a zoning committee, and Counselor Pike is on that committee, and Roseanne Quox, and Ms. Shelton. And we have been looking at some zoning changes. We've had some extensive discussions. Ms. Sheldon has put together a comprehensive spreadsheet where we can look at different examples from other communities, not only here in New Hampshire, but elsewhere. This concept is a relatively new concept for New Hampshire. These communities are pretty popular down south, down in Florida, where I go on vacation in the winter, but in, you know, in Georgia, outside of the Atlantic area, there are several of these, Philadelphia. Most of them are in more metropolitan urban settings, although the one that's closest and probably the most, you know, well-known here in New Hampshire is the Riverwoods Development in Exeter. There's one over in Durham, there's a couple in Manchester, Bedford.
Ed, would we, there's quite a few actually.
East Kingston.
And, but they're, they're communities that are, most of them are pretty high-end developments. They're very well-done. They're designed by landscape architects and planners and architects, and they provide the services so that indeed people can age in place. And so.
It's positive tax, just to clarify, it's very positive to the tax rules, that's why.
Well, and I didn't want to get into the economics, but that was one of the things that Mr. Connery, who worked for the Economic Development Committee, looked at, is what are the tax implications for the town? And especially the higher end, the more specialized nursing care, memory impaired facilities really provide a positive tax benefit to the town.
Yep.
And if the town could be successful in attracting this type of development to the community, then it would really be a win-win for the community. So having said that.
We have a few, we have a few questions. Can we start asking a few, or?
Yeah, and please, I'd like to keep this pretty informal.
Counselor.
And have everyone participate to the extent they can.
Okay, Counselor Weinstein, Nazarow, and Pike.
So I guess, especially for the overlay districts, where are we at with that? Because we had a resolution that's been tabled for quite a while.
That was for.
That should create an economic recovery zone.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's not zoning, that's.
Right.
So I guess, what are our next steps?
I was kind of, they asked me to update that, so that, so if I can jump out of line, if it's all right.
Yes, please do. Forgive me if I didn't mention you were on the committee. Did I mention?
You did.
You did, you did fine, you did fine. But I, I, and I actually just wanted to add that it, because I went back, and man, this has been a lot. And we, we had five meetings since mid-October with this subcommittee, not counting an extra workshop on the planning board. So it's, it's a, it's a lot to move these things along. And the, and Val has done a gathering, a great deal to gather information and provide, Diane, of course, but Val has really done a tremendous amount on that. So, and that's, just for an example, there are multi, multi-pages on Val's spreadsheet. And the reason I'm bringing it, and these are two-sided, by the way, all, the, the, the point that I'm going to make about that is, is that there is a lot of differences. You know, the zoning is not, you know, you can kind of come up with model zoning, but there's a lot of differences. And I think the most interesting thing that Val pointed out when we met last evening was that in both Exeter and Durham, they had made no planning. The developers came there, there was no special zoning to encourage these in there. They, the developer wanted to build it there, and they came and they made a proposal, and the town saw it as advantageous, which is not to say that we shouldn't continue to work on the zoning. But I actually went back and read the Quox report and the Connery reports again today. And they place equal emphasis on those reports with the idea that the town needs to organize how they, how they encourage developers in that way. If that's what we want, we need to sort of have a, have a story, so, and have something we can present, and have a way to talking to people, and make it clear that we're anxious to work with them. Otherwise, the chances that just because we change our zoning, somebody's going to show up.
Build that they will come.
We're a little bit off the beaten track sometimes, and I think we've got a lot to offer here, but it's not as maybe as widely known sometimes as we think it is. And, and so the, the other part of our conversation, and where, what we were, our next steps as a subcommittee were to start going to some of these centers and learn more about what kind of zoning would be attractive to them. Any thoughts we could learn from some of the potential developers that are out there about what they, what they think is important in this area? It might help us, because like I said, there's a wide variation among, among what communities have done, or even whether it was necessary. And the, the second thing I would add to that is that it, it might be, again, the Quox and Connery reports are both encouraging that we start to think about what we would do as a town, so that when we, if we're out having those conversations, we may have people, we, we had a conversation about the, the, the New Market, the NCDC, the Community Development Group, bringing them into the conversation, because it, it probably, whatever we do to try to, to make changes to planning and zoning, we should also be thinking about the first time we connect with people, about looking like we have our, our act together. It's really, how do we sell New Market for this?
We talked about an Economic Development Director, and kind of threw that around, but.
Right, and that really brings it back to the town council from zoning. We, I think the town council, as we move into the coming months, needs to start thinking about, you know, how do we, what do we, what kind of additional do we want to put, Diane mentioned, you could start to think in terms of spending a few hours of engineering time on coming up with a preliminary estimate of what it would cost to run sewer out there, because none of this happens on one fifty-two unless, unless the developer, or the town, or some public-private partnership is going to run that out there, because it sits on the aquifer. You're not going to have a high-density development out there without connection to these utilities. So it, it may be time to start, you know, developing the, the plans and the thinking among not just changes to zoning, but also what other resources would we have to start to think about in order to, to be positioned to really have a really serious conversation with developers.
Not to digress, I just want to close the circle on this real quick. We had someone come in, and just so everybody knows, Schinberg, you know, took the old, correct me if I'm wrong, quasi-industrial park that never took off in Durham, and he's doing a CCRC out there, correct?
It's assisted living.
Assisted living, yep.
So we did have somebody come in, but it turned into a fifty-five and up instead of what we were looking for. But my question is, was that person not? But my question is, was that person not able, what was the name of the property, Val? I can't remember the name of it. The one that's kind of the brown site that's-
The bouillier property.
Yeah.
Could, could someone not go out there, put up, I'm just making, I'm using a number as a hypothetical, put it, put up 75 or 100 units for some kind of a continued care facility and not have to have town water? I'm just asking.
Sewer, sewer, I think, excuse me. Sewer, I think, is the bigger issue.
Okay.
Right, town water's available.
I just want to clarify that. We wouldn't have to bring both.
No.
You'd need sewer, at least.
And what we've envisioned, I think, is restricting the size of a septic system that could be out there, because it's in the aquifer.
I think we said, absolutely not.
All right, so we're telling people you have to tie into sewer, and sewer is not there.
That's what we're recommending.
My experience has been, and I agree with Counselor Pike, that the town should really investigate some sort of public-private partnership. If we could have all the zoning in the world, if we don't have sewer out there, that area will never get developed.
Because it'll be too costly.
Too, too expensive.
I was made aware of the question about the sewer earlier today, so I asked the water and sewer superintendent, did we have a look at the numbers? And we did, in 2002, and at that point in time, it was estimated that it would be about $1.4 million in 2002 dollars-
How was that, pretty good, huh?
To connect. That was done by the town engineers, and we could update that pretty quickly. He applied a 2.5% yearly increase to that 1.4, so it's probably about $2 million now to bring sewer out to that area.
And my concern would be, because I know for the Wally Falls assisted living over there, you have to have sewer. That's why we put that pumping station right there at Mill Life, but you can't hook into a bed sufficient, open to the air. So you have to have sewer. So if it's going to cost 2 million, what is it going to do for users? What's the payback on the sewer being used up there? And like they mentioned, you know, it's all gravel pits up there, and it's over the aquifer, and Dufrance Henry reported saying that they didn't even want excavations up there. So now we have people coming in and wanting to put homes, and it really wasn't fair to the property owners. Leo Minso owns one of the properties, and he was at one of our meetings, and they changed it to be free. So now it's business. The taxes almost doubled, and no one's looked at it in 15 years. It's not going to work. Like, they said, even with the CCRC, if you change the zoning, doesn't mean they're going to come and build it. And it's not fair to the property owners. They're restricted by location, and they're restricted by the aquifer. And they're stuck with B three, they're paying extra taxes, and the property's just sitting there. So, I mean-
That's all the Connery report, by the way. He brought all these things up, and people-
Shouldn't know about it.
And I mean, this is something I think that we really have to do in, in order to give some relief for those property owners up there. They've been paying taxes for so long, and, and to do the, and to invest in it. You know, we're paying 14 million for the wastewater treatment plant, and all Sean ever says is, you put all this money out, you need as many uses as possible on your, your public water and sewer system in order to, to get a payback. And this is a good investment. And if you do something like that, and then go ahead and do the, the, no, what was that? The CRZ?
CCRZ.
The CRZ. You know, that could possibly help someone up there to, to get that developed, and to do it in stages. So it's something, and, you know, we have to stop putting some money out in order to do that. We already have this, this study, which I mentioned yesterday, I thought we did, so we'll save money in engineering there, but it's something that should really be looked at.
And I think as a town, we just need to be willing to talk to people. You know, we, if this is allowed, there'll be a lot, I'm not saying there'll be a lot of interest, but there'll be people inquiring about it. And people come in and say, you know, if you help with the sewer, I could do something. We just can't turn people away. I mean, there's a reason why that area hasn't been developed, and, I mean, there's a reason why New Market is the way it is. It's, it's great because of the location, it's very difficult to get to. And that's why we don't have a ton of businesses in town, big office buildings and everything. That's a, that why, that's part of the reason the town's so quaint and everything, but that's also why it's difficult to develop, because it's hard to get to.
As, as a business, more or less.
Yes, yes.
Something like this, I think, would fly out there dramatically, because you are limited because of the, the aquifer. So it's good for the town, it's good for the tax base, and it's good for the aquifer.
Counselor Nazar has been very patient.
So, rarely stated words. Um-
It must be the new BMB.
It's the new BMB.
Black asleep, I'm ready.
Yeah, he's sleeping hours on end these days. It's amazing, it's quick, only weekend. So, I'm not going to be on the council when any of these get voted on, so just to get it out there on the record, well, thank you for all the work the planning board's done on this, sort of echo things that I've heard multiple people say. If the rose is not pinned on somebody to be responsible for, like, marketing this, then it doesn't matter how many zoning changes we make, it's just going to sit there. Razan alluded to, like, the B three, the B two, the same, like, it's just hanging out, nothing going on. Obviously, there's, like, other elements that need to be considered, the water thing, if the town's not willing to inv, or the sewer, if the town's not willing to, like, ante up and say, we're willing to do part of the sewer extension, then we might just as well not do anything, because it's probably going to end up just sitting there undone. So, if we're in, we're in, if we're not, we're not. I think as a community, and the future council will have to make that decision as to whether or not they're going to change the zoning, then what else? What comes next? It's not just change the zoning, then it happens.
And I mean, Val, you mentioned the other day, what was the, the taxes on one of these, those properties? Was it almost a million dollars in tax revenues, and a completed or a half million?
Well, where, where the committee kind of came to a conclusion of was, should we be looking at this particular area of town no differently than how we looked at the mill redevelopment? And we had this, you know, massive potential tax base, and what did we need to invest in a town, and how do we need to go about getting the right developer in, in order to bring that onto the tax rules very positively? So how can we take what I think everyone will agree is a, was, is a great success, you know, that we have here in town with the downtown redevelopment, the mill redevelopment, and how can we duplicate that success up in the B three district with a CCRC? And no differently than when we did the mills, there was no zoning in place to permit for what we did, when we found the right developer, and when we figured out what really needed to be changed for the zoning in order to make that development work, that particular development scheme that the town bought into, then we put those tools in place to allow that development to go forward. But far, many years before that, we also put another tool in place, which was the, the TIF, in order to ensure that we could create the infrastructure that was going to be needed downtown in order to support that redevelopment.
And we also did one at, at the Black Bear.
Yeah, and that one didn't work out, but you have to be the right, right area and find the right developer for the product that we want in order to create another success in another, from a tax revenue perspective, in a different area of town.
Just to Phil's point, because I, I just want to, it did come up during our many, many meetings early on with EDC, that B three zone, and it was pretty clear, clearly made that it was zone B three, so there wouldn't be a bunch of residential, in all fairness. So, in a way, and I, I wasn't around, focused on any of this stuff back then, it was well before my time, but, you know, what came out of some of those conversations was, it was really, the, the goal was to kind of keep it dormant. So, we have to be honest with ourselves and come to terms with the fact that that was never really contemplated to be a rock and roll B three zone. I think people were just concerned about expenses and school issues and things of that nature, and that goes back many, many years. So, now we have a new plan, we have God knows how many studies, so.
And we, we did that, in retrospect, at great expense to those landowners. Because their taxes have gone from what was a residential base to commercial industrial. And if they're operating, they're not under any current use. Now, out of our public hearings, you know, and we had several of the landowners within the district come and speak, it's, it's clear that it's not the whole B three that really should be segmented for this product, or even just, or we should really also start thinking about rezoning other sections of, of the B three, like along Ash Swamp Road. I mean, that should be all residential, it's residential now. And some of the landowners, when their land was converted to the B three, really lost an opportunity to just have a few more single-family houses on Ash Swamp Road. And the same on the other, the, the end of 152 or Ash Swamp, Swamp Road, you know, intersect. It's residential, and yet, everyone living there has a non-conforming use. I mean, it's, it's commercial, industrial, but everyone, you know, all were on that section. There's probably five or six houses, they're all non-conforming. And so, you know, is this another opportunity to really focus on what are the specific parcels or sections of the parcels that we're, keep talking about an overlay zone, but really, should we be looking at rezoning the boundary of that area?
Well, Connery did recommend residential with the CCRC, if I recall, but-
That would be the, yeah.
Just to call it what it was.
Yeah, that would be the overlay, so it'd be reasonable, right?
Well, the CCRC has a huge, I'm sorry, CCRC has a huge component of single-family residential-
Right.
-in these, you know, successful developments.
But those are usually done after the developer has done the, the larger units and so forth. It's a component of the project. So they all just go in and put all those 55 and O's and nothing else.
Let Phil continue, please.
Well, no, that's good. It's all, I totally agree with everything you said. I think that this is an opportunity to look at zoning as a whole, not just the overlay, but actually looking at zoning, because there's things in zoning that don't, current B three, especially that really don't always make sense. The overlay district, so recognizing it's not like a silver bullet to the tax rate, and recognizing that we've had, like, B, two B districts that sort of just sat there, and like, nothing's really gone, and now we're looking at, like, okay, well, what else can we do there? Is there, outside of the every 10 years we've got to relook at the master plan, like, an idea of, like, all right, we're going to go back in five years, be like, is the overlay working, or is it still sitting there, like, nothing going on? Like, how often are we going to go back and look at, like, is this working?
That's a, that's a very good point. I don't think, historically, it never gets done.
Yeah, right.
We make a zoning change or do an overlay, or towns do, and it sits that way forever until somebody wants to do something that they can't do, and then they decide to change the zoning. I mean, that's a valid point. I mean, the B three out there, look, that's been sitting there for 20-something years, and nothing has happened. That, to me, shows that it's bad zoning.
But the EDC made this recommendation almost two years ago.
Oh.
So it's not like we didn't do-
No, but I'm just- Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying, as a town in a whole, 20 years.
You guys have had it.
Oh, no, I understand, I'm not saying, I'm saying that historically, you set, town set zoning up, and it doesn't change until there's a reason to change it. And what-
I'm saying-
What Counselor Nazar was saying is that, you know, that, and I, I agree with him, there should be some sort of self-checking there, okay, we set this zoning up after five years, nobody's even knocked on our door, maybe we didn't do anything. There's no, there's nothing etched in stone that we do, but it's a valid point.
But that's all part of the master planning process. I mean, we're supposed to be master plan, updating every five to 10 years, and as part of that process, we look at, is the zoning working, and if it's not, what's wrong, and what can we do to tweak it to make it more desirable?
I guess I'm just saying that the charter requires it once every 10 years. And, like, I would just say, from a guy that is just going to be sitting on the other side of the microphone from a planning board meeting, like, maybe more often, like, especially since we're testing the overlay out, like, maybe, like, at the five-year point, and like, how's this working?
Well, I think you should, as part of the discussion, and I think it was actually came from Connery and others, though, in this case, we, in matter of fact, it's in our priority list, that, that was some of the notes I put together, is that the plan is, is to proceed with the overlays, see if they work, and if they don't work, then-
Revisit it.
Revisit it, and it's already planning within that four or five year, you know, I mean, it takes a while for these things to happen.
Reports are fine, but it's like the board that's actually going to have to do the work.
Well, and that, and it's-
If it's revisited, it's, it's, gets rezoned to residential.
Yeah.
Right, right. And unless the town's willing to-
We tried to do that out where we are, okay? And as you know, landowners came out, and they were upset about it. So, you know, we could only do what we can do.
Understood.
We made recommendations literally two years ago.
But also, in that, in that vein, when's the last time the, the EDC, the committee met? Two years?
We've been waiting for the planning board.
But technically, with all the recommendations that Connery made in his report, he stated that you should have a consultant in these, in, in form committees and discusses. So basically, it's, it's fallen off on the town council end of it. The town council dropped the ball in-
Well, I don't, it, it's, we don't need to, we don't need to go that road, that's, that's immaterial.
No, I have to say, I have to say something here, and it's not because I'm on the council, because I could give a damn about that aspect of it. There were recommendations, we have spent, since I have been involved in this town, elderly housing, back when they were looking to do it over on the Schultz property on Bay Road. We had Connery come in for that Boise Cascade deal. We had Connery come back with this after Quos. We've probably spent north of 100,000, maybe 120 grand all in. And then we give those recommendations, or we make those recommendations, and let's call it what it is, it's political will. So at some point, when people come up to the dais and they say, I don't want this, or I don't like this, and the hell with this, if the planning board doesn't want to move on at that point, and the council doesn't get it from, because the protocol is the planning board to come to the council, and then the council will discuss it, it's really hard. If the council ended up taking up those conversations, people would say they usurped the planning board, and they, they jumped the gun. And, and my beef, in general, is not with the planning board, per se, it's that we spend all this money on studies, and we do virtually nothing with them, really.
Yeah.
And I'm talking real money. I'm not talking about somebody came in and spent a couple of grand. So, you know, with all due respect-
And I think, and I agree with you.
We haven't had an EDC meeting, because what the hell are we going to have a meeting for?
Counselor-
We've met, we've made recommendations, they go to the planning board, people weigh in, a, a small group of people, I might add, and then it goes out the window, and we haven't heard anything.
Right. And I, I absolutely agree with you.
There you go.
And part of the, part of the problem is that everybody in this room, except for two of you, are volunteers. And how many hours do people have to do this? I mean, I'm not going to spend all my free time working on zoning changes in New Market, I'm just not going to, like, I've got better things to do, as do most people here. So, a lot of it is just a function of the way the town government is run, is it, it's all volunteers, and there's only a certain amount of time. Dale, Rosie, and Val spent a lot of time on this other thing that, quite honestly, I couldn't, I wouldn't have the time to do it. So, it's tough to find the time to make some of these changes. And then you're right, it's a political will, and I happen to believe that if you, we're making zoning changes to 400 acres, and the people that own the 400 acres don't want the zoning changes, I think we should listen to them. And I, you know, not that that should rule the day necessarily, but we should at least listen to what they have to say. So, it's a function of the way the town runs. I agree with you.
And I get that, I'm just saying, just bear in mind, we spend a lot of money on these studies.
It's turning into a debate as well.
And I, I don't think there's, I don't think there's any blame to be put, I don't think there's any blame. We're moving as fast as we can, it just doesn't move fastly. I'm not saying you are. I'm not saying you are.
Well, yeah, but I, I mean, I, I, it sounded like, almost a little bit. But I, but the point I was going to make is that, is that it was, you know, the last, last winter was the master plan, future land use chapter, which we felt like we had to do first, and I was on that subcommittee. And then that took us into the summer before we got it approved, and then we started meeting again in October, and as I said before, we've met five times on that. And if you go back to read the reports, too, it's, there is as much there in those reports for recommendation, for things that aren't the planning board as the planning board. But I, rather than beat each other up, I would say, it's great that we're here as a combined planning board, town council, and then we, and we, what, what I made with my comments just a few minutes ago, is that if we're really serious about that, it's not enough to just change the zoning. We've talked about it, we're prepared to move, keep moving forward on that, but if we don't do anything else, it isn't going to matter.
And that was my point. How many studies can we get? How many meetings can we have? If we don't make any decisions, it's really hard to say we have to revisit this.
Agreed. I, I don't disagree with that, anyway.
But, I mean, you've got to, you've got to come up with a process. I mean, it's not going to, I don't think the, the planning board is where all of the impetus for this will lie. So if we don't have, I don't know whether it comes from the council, the administrator, something else, but we, it's not just all that the planning board will move this forward from here. from here. I don't think that's reasonable to expect that.
Okay. Well, the only thing I'll say on that is, we've made recommendations to the B3 in the EDC report, it's part of your master plan update. You accepted it from the EDC, you didn't agree with it necessarily, but you accepted it. You took it in, it's in the master plan. If you wanna move that forward to the council, we're waiting. You know, if the council just does it, I'm, I'm assuming someone's gonna say, why is the council taking this from the planning board?
No, you, you can't do it without, it has to come through us.
That's my.
Understood.
That's what I'm trying to say.
But we need assistance from the town council to, to say, you know, for you folks to pull that study out, to see how much it would cost to put the sewer, to look for an economic developer, to, to be the go-between for us. It isn't something that, you know, just the planning board's gonna come up with the zone.
I think you're meaning an economic development director.
Director, I'm sorry, director, yeah.
The political will would have to be to fund the economic, the economic development director.
Or rehurvest position.
Right.
I mean, even a part-time one, I guess, some places have just.
Durham has a part-time person, and Exeter has brought a full-time person on in the last five years.
All this discussion is saying the same thing.
Whose job it is to make these projects happen.
Exactly.
And you need somebody who can champion the project, and can move it forward, and can help coordinate all this stuff, because it's not a simple process of just changing the zoning.
All these things, all these things are saying.
There's other pieces that have to come into play.
We're all saying the same thing, in that, basically, to be successful, the town has to be willing to invest in itself, whether that's sewer, whether that's an economic development person, we have to be willing to invest in ourselves. We can draw plans and make changes all we want, if it sits there with no impetus, like Dale said at the very beginning, we need to be willing to invest in ourselves. What that level of investment is, I, I don't think anybody knows at this point, but we have to be cognizant of the fact we need to invest in ourselves.
Can I just use as an example? We're ready to actually, almost ready, I would say, to move forward to the planning board, the proposed overlay district for the assisted living, or the memory care skilled nursing. That's a real straightforward, simple one, it's not about, like, a CCRC is really what is that development plan. This is very specific because of the, the issues surrounding the access and the land mass.
You're talking about the Wilson and the ham?
Correct. And it's town property, you know, that we're also looking at, which I think is part of the goal of the, of the council, is to get that back onto the tax roll. So we're ready to, I would say we're ready to move that forward through the planning board. Okay? But if, even if we adopt that, unless there is a specific, you know, focus on the town, whether it's the council or through the administration department or what have you, to go seek a developer for that specific project, nothing will happen there. Just because it's in our zoning is not gonna make someone come and look at that.
Counselor Weinstein, and then Bowden.
So I, I have some basic questions about the, first about the overlay. And if we were to implement an overlay district, is it just for that one use? So is it just?
Correct. As an example, an overlay for the new, for the Wilson ham property is just for a skilled or memory care type unit, just for that specific.
No, like back doorway to.
Plus the underlying, you can still do whatever's in the underlying zoning.
Right. Yeah, that is the overlay, it's, it's, it's a permitted use above and beyond what is currently there.
Okay. And then, my other questions were about the sewer. So on the, on the new road property, do we have to put sewer there? No.
No, that would be all with well and septic. And that's a much smaller, you know, it's 80, 80-bed unit, it's typically in a single building.
Okay.
It depends what size it is, is really the answer to that, but.
And it's not over the aquifer, so there'd be no objection to a septic system.
Right. And that would have, that would have a limited density, again, because of the land that we're talking about, and the traffic patterns with the bridge on New Road.
Dale, a question, though, because the nursing home on 152 had to have sewer, are we sure that because it's memory assisted, but it's almost like a nursing home, are we sure that they don't have to have sewer?
It's uptown sewer.
Planning board to decide that, as part of the zoning.
But I thought it was mandated.
No, that was a way to get the federal government to pay to get the sewer up to that.
Oh, okay, okay.
That was a Al Dixon deal to get the sewer up.
And that's not the same type of development school.
Okay.
Those are apartments, those are independent living apartments.
Well, we should, you know, this is good, but we should kinda, because we could do this until midnight.
No, absolutely.
But, and, and one more component to, to what we need to do, things, things successful, we've got work on our side to do, and we have work on your side to do. But just looking at these, the junkyard, we have to form a committee to start working on that junkyard. And I worked on it years ago, I have it just about ready to go, I spoke to Steve about it. Looking at all this, the, the future land use of the master plan, the master plan that everybody mentioned, how it's supposed to be done, the town charters every 10 years, to implement all these things, we have to have a full-time code enforcement officer. We cannot do it with what we have now. We might actually need another person in the planning department to help diet in with certain things there. You can just spread these people so far. And we need more money each year in order to comply with the regulation of the charter to do our master plan, 10,000 a year is not cutting. We need to lose 20,000 a year. And those are things that we need as a group in order to do what's needed for the town, and to do it appropriately and timely. So those are things to, to think about. We need some extra money and some extra people. And you've gotta spend it to get it. If you're not gonna get it, I mean, we could get, what, from the B3, a half million a year if we put the right project in there in taxes? Is that what you're.
Yeah, I would think so.
I would figure, yeah.
I would think so, but.
If it's 2 million to put the sewer up there, we're gonna get that paid back within four years, plus we got a user on it, we're getting money from users. So these are things, the tools that we need, and we have to start forming some committees in conjunction with people in the planning board that are familiar with zoning, and with some people that.
Well, Rosie, Rosie, let me just stop you for a minute. I think what you're saying may be true, but I think we haven't discussed a lot of that stuff as a, as a planning board. I think we should discuss that as a planning board, and whatever recommendations we think we need to make, myself and Val, or whoever the chairman is at the time, can come in and speak to the town administrator and say, this is what we think we need to do.
Yeah, but not for property.
But we've never talked about, we've never talked about additional people and this and that. No, that's a different story.
That's the ministry.
Yeah, exactly. That's, I mean, we.
That's what I meant mostly, yeah.
I might also remind people that when we do these master plans, oftentimes, we do not follow them, meaning we don't implement these things. So that is not the silver bullet, just for the sake of making the point. We, and I, I might also suggest to Steve to maybe get the members of the council a copy of the QAS Connery study. That will explain a lot of Tony's questions and other people's, because it's all laid out there, what was recommended to us, and we spent an enormous amount of time, and had so many public meetings. And I don't dispute, Eric, you know, people have a right, property rights and whatnot, but we had, I can't even tell you how many public meetings and never heard from one person. I'm just saying, we didn't have anybody show up to the meetings, one after.
I know how it goes. I know, it always does, I know how it goes.
How many counselors do not have the QAS Connery study? Okay. Yeah, that's, that's the last one.
Yeah, I'm not talking of Boise Cascade.
No, 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 the, the recent one, okay.
Thank you.
It's on the.
Counselor Nazaro.
Dale, were you, were you waiting to say, was that from before?
So just the one last thing I'm gonna say, the one thing that'll pull me out of retirement, and probably surprising nobody, is design standards. The, oh, no, quite the opposite of what you're gonna suggest. Kind of going on property rights and property owner rights, like, any sort of overly restrictive design standards, we don't have them right now downtown, and it's beautiful, I think it looks great. I realize 79E probably is like, helps like enforce, some of those buildings look like, for people who've gotten that tax break. But the idea of being overly restrictive with what a private property owner can do on their property from a government position is something that sits incredibly poorly with me, and I'm sure you'll be hearing more from me in the future on that.
We, Kyle, I'm sure the planning board will have a lot of lively discussions about that.
Thank you.
I think it might be good for the planning board, since this seems to be a heartfelt issue to some people, to take a look at some of the communities that have implemented things, and we're not talking about draconian things, or historic district, which was quite controversial, but basic design standards to make sure that the town has a consistent look. I think most of the towns around us that have implemented them have found that they've been very positive financially to those towns. So that's the other side of that coin. Counselor Bowden.
A couple of quick questions here. Where is the junkyard?
Any?
Which one do you wanna know about?
No, junkyard could be considered someone who has, you know, three unregistered vehicles on their property.
Okay.
That would be considered a junkyard.
A junkyard is considered if there is a motor vehicle or auto parts in accumulation amounting to two or more vehicles.
Two or more.
Is, you require a license, and the license has to come from the town council.
Right, they apply for a license, and they have a hearing.
They, they have a lot of criteria, it's location, they have to get a, a check from the police department, this is a lot involved. And, and I have mockups and some samples of applications that I worked on in the past. Code enforcement officer just never got finalized through the town council, but it's just about ready to go, I'm gonna work on it, to, to present it.
There is an ordinance that's in the ordinance book for the junkyard that's, that's codified, so it's not, we don't need a re-.
I think the only thing you were missing in that was the application, and that's what I think.
Yeah, you don't need to put that in the ordinance, we can, that's just a ministerial.
Administrative thing.
Right.
So for clarification, we currently have the junkyard ordinance in town?
We do.
It's just not enforced?
It's, it's enforced.
Maybe it is, maybe it isn't.
No, no.
On an as-needed basis.
As, yeah.
As-needed basis.
It's not a comprehensive enforcement program.
And I just wanna make sure it's clear that this is not something that happened within the last year, within the last five years, it's been ongoing.
I think if you all drive around, you might be able to see things that may not constitute an official junkyard in your mind, but might meet the criteria of.
Yeah, but I'm having code enforcement, though. There's only so much that can be enforced.
Exactly.
God bless you.
Part-time, but it, it's a state, I would say, the town's required to enforce it. They're required to do, if it's a salvage yard, or in guidance, there's a lot of, the green yard and so forth. And if there is an ordinance, then it's supposed to be enforced, and no one in town has a license for junkyard. So there is an ordinance for seven years, and it has to be enforced, there's no license. They have to come in once a year for license. It gets renewed every April, April 1st, and it's 250 miles, and they have to come in and do this every year.
What's the other question?
So, thank you.
Wasn't sure if the junkyard I was, was hearing was in relation to the 152 Ash swamp, the zone that's out there for.
No, there was a junkyard out there that has ceased, and it's no longer grandfathered in because it was, they came before the council when I was on the council. Were you on, I don't know if you were on the council, Levy?
But that's why it's kind of a quasi brown property, there's issues with it and contamination.
Yes, they had a contamination issue, and they came back to try to get their, excuse me, they tried to come back and get their, the grandson or something tried to come back and get the junkyard reinstituted. And at the time, the council said, no, it hasn't been in existence.
Can I, just for the record, it had issues with groundwater contamination. They have received a DES notice of no further action because that issue has been addressed through a natural attenuation. I don't wanna mislead anyone in the public thinking that there are issues there with hazardous materials. There are tires on the property that are being removed on an annual basis by the current owner, and they are in compliance with the state law with regard to that.
Val just found out it's 65 acres.
And that's, that's the property that they wanted to do the 55 and up, and blah, blah, blah.
And they're still interested.
So, I guess, to try and finish up my question here, is, looking at the, the differences in zoning, I guess, not look for a dollar amount, I guess, what is the percentage that the people are paying being zoned non-residential? What is the percentage, how much more are they paying in taxes?
I think he said it was almost double.
Double, is what he said.
It changes the assessment.
It changes, it doesn't change the tax rate, it changes the assessment.
Right, the assessed valuation.
The assessment, so if they're.
Are those properties in current use by any chance, some of them?
The ones that are being operated as gravel yards would not be permitted to be in current use.
Okay, but they're bringing in income.
The Bolio property, I don't know.
Yes.
That's correct. Or if they're storing materials there, they can't be under current use.
But I think what Kyle was getting at are people paying significant dollars and not being able to use the property, and the, the component that you might wanna just, to get the whole picture.
Correct.
Some of those properties may be in current use. I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying they may be. So those, that they're not really paying anything if they're in current use. So that's the, that's the, the balance to that.
Just wanna clarify that, the, the reason why the, the assessment goes up is because the market for that type of land, as business versus residential, justifies it at that value. It doesn't mean that automatically that once it goes to business, it just doubles. It's what the assessor looks at the market value, not only in Newmarket, but across the region, and determines that that's what the value is. So I just don't wanna make it sound like, okay, if you zone something business, it automatically goes double. It's what the market brings.
And if at the time the market did double.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is that pretty much?
We have one other little item, and that is that we're working on sign regulations. And Mike Hoffman has put together some recommendations, the committee is vetting them, and we have a draft that's almost close to being ready for public hearing, and that's to help address some of the current deficiency in the sign regulations. And I'll leave that discussion for another day, but I wanted you to know that it's coming, and be braced for that.
You guys have been great.
All right, thank you.
Another 100 pages of.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I mean, that's.
I really wanna thank you all, because it's, you know, I know you meet, and we've been trying to get together, and I, we'd like to thank you for that. Counselor Thompson.
I just wanted, what, what types of signs? You mean on buildings, in front of buildings?
We're talking about, we have a sign ordinance, we're talking, yeah. And I have a draft I could make available to, if you'd just like to see the, the nature of what we're looking at and talking about. I'd be happy to make that available to you.
Newmarket, the next Las Vegas?
Yeah, we have a lot of discussion about limitations on neon-style signs.
That we know flashing signs.
The issue with sign ordinance is it, mostly what the planning board is involved with is site plan review and subdivision reviews, and so we're not getting involved with, like, single-family houses throughout the town, or duplexes and the use of those properties. But the sign ordinance is townwide, it applies to all properties. So I think.
As it should.
Let's ask Phil that.
Well, it doesn't apply to single-family residences. You could put a sign up, you could put a 10 by 10 sign with your name on it, as a single-family resident.
Not under the sign ordinance. Not under the sign ordinance.
All right, we'll talk about it later.
Just wondering what kind. Just to the chair and the town administrator, Phil brought up a really good point. I think you should very soon schedule a, a work session with the planning board, and you should very soon schedule a work session with the planning board, and we can mull over what was discussed this evening. Everybody can read the Fossey-Conroy report, go over whatever other materials we send you, talk about it, get some committees set up, and let's get the ball rolling. So let's not just say, you know, we'll see you next year in February again. Let's get a workshop scheduled.
Thank you for all your time.
Was that pen and rose? Here, Rosie. Was that pen and the rose meant for roses?
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
I'm going to stick around for the other discussion.
Okay. Can I have? We'll, we'll, we'll hopefully not. Can I have a motion, guys? We got to move, guys. We got to get going, hopefully. Can I have a motion to accept 15, February 15, non-public meeting minutes, please? Do I have a second? You can pick that one, it doesn't matter to me. Please call the roll. Any changes? Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Yeah.
Motion passes 7-0.
February 15, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Second. I was tied with Amy, and I can't even make a motion. I will in a few weeks, maybe. Call the roll.
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, wait, what? What?
Discussion?
Yeah. What?
We were so good on the first one. I was like, wait, what'd they do?
What do you want to change?
Um, little bits. Line 92, which is page 23 of the packet. No federal funds were available as everyone perhaps east of Manchester has to comply with this, not west.
That's correct. But east of Manchester?
Everybody east of Manchester, which we are.
East is west, though.
But it says west. Oh, it says west? I'm sorry.
Okay, 10 lashes.
Minor scrivener's error, line 118. Continues from line 117. Town Administrator Fornier said "they" a CIP process, "that" a CIP. The word should be "that," not "they." Second word in on line 118. Patricia?
Yep.
Um, and I'm not sure if you, if we go down to page 26 of the packet, line 220 is my note. And it may be my recollection, I did not re-watch the meeting. Line 220, as Finance Director Angel said he believed it had been looked into for the granite or something, but was not approved due to the difficulty of cleaning snow around them. I had thought we had some verbal discussion about what the difference was between granite tire stops, cleaning around granite tire stops versus cleaning around bollards. I thought I heard that, but I didn't see it in the minutes, and I did not re-watch the meeting. So if somebody else recalls that, great, if not. He did mention he had.
What my recollection, my recollection was, if I may, what, he said that he thought that the reason they didn't go with the granite or the concrete slab was because it would be difficult to clean snow, to which a couple of people on the council said, and you don't have to clean snow around a bollard. That was the extent of the conversation.
Okay, well, and that's basically what I'm saying, is I thought I heard that discussion, so.
But it's sort of saying, but it was not approved to the difficulty of cleaning snow, so I don't know.
Okay.
Those were under-the-breath comments. There were no, like, council that came out and hit the button and said, what about bollards?
Okay, I didn't think it was under the, under the breath. Okay, that was all I had. Thank you.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Yep.
Motion passes 7-0.
Give your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to try to be brief. The first item is the Newmarket to Durham Road widening project for the north portion. You probably have noticed that they've already begun moving the telephone poles. That is the beginning of the continuation of last year's project. I'm saying this publicly with peace and love, that this is warning everybody that it's coming again, and this time it's going to be in Newmarket. We understand the difficulty last year. We just want everybody to get ready for that. It's the installation of bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides of the road from 200 feet north of Bay Road to about Stagecoach Road. So, just to get everybody ready, as soon as it's warm, which it seems to be getting there, they're going to start, just to let everybody know. To go, and not in my written report, but I want to give an update on the bike lanes on the southern part of Route 108. I received communication from the Department of Transportation last week, from their finance department, requesting payment for the $43,000 as an addition of a DUNES letter for non-payment of the $43,000. I reiterated that we do not have authority to expend the $43,000 since the voters at the 2010 town meeting, when approved this project, stated that no tax dollars will be used. And I also said, even if that is approved, I don't have an appropriation to give the money of $43,000.
Where's it? The lawyer's hands, man?
It's, the lawyer has been CC'd, and according to DOT, after two more DUNES letters, they'll give it to their attorneys, so.
Great.
Which is the Attorney General's office. So if you ever see a letter from the Attorney General's office, that's what it is.
And it'll go to the next chair, so just be advised. They'll come to your home and knock on your door.
They'll come to your home and knock on your door, so.
You'll be served.
We'll let everybody know. I just wanted to give, let the council know about a grant that the fire department is applying for, for the Department of Safety, for tactical equipment for the EMTs. And it's just because it's a new way to think about first responders to incidents in the community. Traditionally, EMS has been taught to wait for police to declare a scene safe prior to assisting victims. But increasingly, the casualty outcomes indicate that the change in operations are needed. After the incident at Sandy Hook, Department of Homeland Security determined that in order to maximize lives saved, there's a need to get life-saving medical attention to victims quickly. In previous active shooter incidents, the focus, again, has been exclusively on law enforcement neutralizing the threat and not assisting victims. If awarded, this grant would provide EMS with the necessary tactical equipment and training for police, fire, and EMS to work together to lessen casualties in an incident. I talked to Chief True. He supports this grant and will work with fire department implemented if awarded. It's basically to get, and give me, correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Nazaro, in medical terms, a frontline medic to go out to an incident. They will be having the same tactical gear, almost as police would have in a situation like that, to help assist victims on the scene. Yeah, if, just.
So this is, I mean, this is money for a one-time purchase and one-time training?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's just protective gear, right?
Yeah.
It's not, so there's really no training on protective, just training on wearing it, right?
Well, and also the correct way to use it in the field.
So.
Which we train for emergencies.
Okay. So once it is done its useful life, which will be like in so many years, we then just have to go out and purchase replacements?
Yeah, we would.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but again, this is, this is the, the change in mindset.
And they pay 100% of this?
Yes, for homeowners.
For the first one?
For the first.
How much is it again?
About $5,000. I'm sorry, about $6,000. We're just under $6,000.
And what's the life expectancy?
I don't know.
Maybe we could find that out.
Yep.
I mean, I suppose, Phil. I suppose after the useful life is done, we can get some kind of synopses as to how much it was used. You know, is it something the town wants to continue doing?
I just know that as soon as we accept something like this.
It's hard to get out of it.
It routinely occurs that it becomes part of their, like, primary load list, and we just end up just rebuying it.
One of the big things also that, when I was talking to the chief, Chief True, that with concern is, we, we also, the main administrator, I don't not administrator, but drivers for the command unit, for the fireside. And when we go to those scenes, we're putting them into that area as well. So we want to make sure that they're protected. So that's another reason why they're trying to get this equipment for them.
Yes, Counsel Thompson.
Tactical equipment, meaning bulletproof vests, is that what we're talking about?
Vests, helmets. What?
Are those interchangeable? Like, can, so if I have one, I mean, maybe not me and you, but, you know, like.
They're just like standard sizes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's like large, extra large.
Why only two years? You, I don't, why do they only last a couple of years?
Because after a while, they're just not ready.
They break down?
More.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah. That's even Kevlar vests and police vests. We have to replace every so often because they, they just naturally degrade.
Counsel, is that okay, Counsel Weinstein?
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Taunton? You're good?
Nothing, that must have been from before.
Just, again, for election day schedules, I've heard from everybody, we are going to need some counselors pro-town. So if anybody out there who knows how to work an election, we'll talk to the moderator and we'll point some for that day. But we do have a schedule now, so we should be all set.
Are you still missing somebody in the afternoon? Is that what I saw?
No, I, I heard from the last individual.
The bore filled in?
So we're all set.
Okay, thank you.
And scheduling for council meetings, we'll have, you will have a non-public at 6:30 on the 15th. And there, you have a election of officers meeting, we'll put it that way, on the 22nd, which is the, the Wednesday following the swearing-in on that Monday. So you can have a regular, have a meeting that night.
And that's all we're going to do on that Wednesday meeting?
We haven't, yeah, because there's no first readings.
Can I ask a question then, just to ask? Since we're going to meet, I didn't realize that that was all the agenda was for that week after. Is there any reason we can't meet after the non-public to do the swearing-in? Because it seems kind of.
So the charter requires that it's the Monday after the election.
Following the election.
Right, you, you, you can't, the new council's not in office yet.
Okay. And we can't suspend the rules or?
No, state law requires.
Charter, it's not like it's our.
Yeah, state law requires at least on Friday in state law, yeah.
We're all going to be here.
Well, no, the new councils won't be here.
Well, you know what I meant, I'm sorry. We're all going to be here next week, so I, that's what I meant. Okay.
And the candidate tonight will be at 7:00 PM on March 7th in the Town Hall Auditorium. And I just want to take this opportunity to express my thanks and gratitude to Counsel Nazaro, who is not running again. So this is his last public meeting this time. From the days of the months of us negotiating my agreement to start here, you've always been a straight shooter, and I've always appreciated that, and you've always been forthright with me, and I just want to thank you. And on behalf of the staff, I know they also want to thank you, and will miss your camaraderie in Town Hall. So thank you.
I'm not dying, but thank you very much. I'll still be in town. Thank you.
That's all of it tonight, Mr. Chair.
Any, I see, known lights? So, do I have a motion to accept ordinance 2016-17-1, amending chapter 32, zoning article 1, non-conformity, section 32, 11 definitions of article, I believe at 7, other requirements, section 32-234, accessory apart. So is this the accessory apartments and? That's just the accessory apartment one, correct?
No, it's everything.
It's everything.
So it's all wrapped into that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, well, we can have a, fine. I didn't realize, I thought we were going to vote on each one and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, vote together.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions? I only have, I only have one. And it's, I brought it up during the meeting. The only question I have, or that I feel is really not necessary, is to go to 1,000 square feet. And as I said before, it's not to my benefit, but we have, in the mid-50s, if not higher, multifamily in Newmarket now. As memory serves me, I heard the planning board debated it fairly lengthily, if that's a word. They had a lengthy discussion. Is that correct, Counsel Pike?
Well, I would say there was active disagreement, but.
Okay.
It didn't go on and on, but there was disagreement.
We're at 750 now, or 800 now, excuse me, is that correct? And we're certainly meeting the threshold. If someone wants to go and get, go to the ZBA and go for 1,000 or 1,200 feet, or whatever they want to go for, they can go to the ZBA. It's not like they're locked down, any more than they're not allowed to put another apartment on their property. So I would like to keep it to 800 because I think Newmarket right now has, has got more than enough. I think one of the comments Diane made was, many towns don't allow for multifamily or rentals or workforce-type housing, et cetera. And Newmarket certainly cannot be put in that category. That is not analogous in any way, shape, or form to Newmarket. So I am in favor of keeping it at 800, understanding that the, the people have an opportunity to change it if they want to go to the ZBA. Counselor Nazaro?
So I believe Diane's comment was that towns do not have ordinances that allow for accessory apartments, but now the state law has changed that is basically saying, you have to allow us accessory apartments. And the state law, whereas our original ordinance allowed for only one bedroom, state law requires we allow two bedrooms.
Up to.
Up to two bedrooms, right. Yeah, up to, yeah, it doesn't have to be, but up to two bedrooms, which is where the extra 200 feet come in, saying like, okay, well, if you're going to say we have to allow them to have two, another two bedrooms, assume another 200 square feet for that room. So I am, I think I am fine with 1,000. And I'm fine with passing this as written.
Counsel Burns?
I was just going to bring up that the, the two-bedroom state law portion of it that allows for up to two bedrooms also, so that was part of the reason for adding the 200 additional feet. So I'm okay with it as well, but I, reiterating what Counsel Nazaro said.
And I will just say, I appreciate that, but I don't think there's any, you know, for example, I have, I put in my home something that someone could, you know, move into when I built my new house. And I don't need 1,000 square feet to get a second bedroom. I'll leave it at that, you know? I think 1,000 square feet is, you know, pretty close to another house. Almost, you know, there's plenty of houses here between 1,200 and 1,500 square feet. So I think it's fairly substantial for a, for an apartment. So, anyway, that's my opinion. Seeing no other lights, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike. Counsel Thompson.
Wait a minute, I apologize. Do I have to make, if I wanted to make a, a motion to amend this, I don't mind losing because I'm used to it, but.
Someone would have to make it. Can the chair make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can make a motion.
So I would make a motion to approve as written, changing the 1,000 square feet to 800?
I think the motion would be to amend the.
Amen first.
To change from 800, or 1,000 back to 800.
Okay, just that paragraph? Because, because I'm okay with the rest of the.
Yep.
Okay.
If you're just changing that number.
Okay, so I'm just, I'd make an amendment to change it from 1,000 to 800 square feet.
Gary, I had my light on, just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, I just, I put it on the shot to go, I was just for the, for the record, because I was, I was one of the voices on there. I, I was in favor of keeping it 800 at that. But, I mean, I think both positions are reasonable, and I, you know, I will support the zoning changes, whichever the council decides, whether it's 800 or 1,000. And as they said, the, the people have the ability to go to the ZBA if, if they need more space.
Discussion.
You need, I need a second to discuss this motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Counsel Nazaro?
One question. I believe that Diane said that these changes were, or was Eric, perhaps, were, when voted on by the planning board, were unanimous, correct? At the final vote?
Yeah, I, I did.
Rose answered.
I did go along and say.
So at the end, it was unanimously supported at 1,000, even though there was debate, even though there was vigorous debate?
There was concession.
I conceded.
Conceded, okay.
But in, in my mind, to get back to state is requiring to say two bedrooms.
Up to.
But if the state itself is saying that should be definitely 750 square feet, then who are we to say if we need to allow?
But the board, when the board voted, the board voted unanimously to support this as it's written to us.
Yeah, but he wasn't for, I wasn't for, sorry.
During the debate, but the vote, but the vote. All I'm asking is what the vote was.
Yes, procedurally, the votes were unanimous.
Thank you.
I went along to get along.
You went, the votes were unanimous.
Thank you.
There's a lot of going along to get along. I guess I'm just not part of that. So call the roll.
This is, this is on the amendment to change from 1,000 square feet to 800 square feet. Counsel Burns.
Nay.
Counsel Bowden.
Nay.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Nay.
Counsel Nazaro.
Nay.
Counsel Levy.
Doesn't matter.
I got it, you got to vote.
Got to vote.
Aye.
Motion fails three to four. Back to the original zoning amendment as written. You have a motion in a second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Nay.
Motion passes six to one.
Do I have a motion to accept resolute?
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd ask you to take items in the first reading out of order in order to, there was a request of the council to have a resolution to rescind.
Oh, to rescind the.
The previous resolution?
Yeah, so is that resolution 19?
27.
Okay. So you want me to jump around to 27?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to rescind resolution?
Actually, what you need first is to read the resolution, then accept the motion to suspend the rules to act on it this evening. Do I read? I got it right in front of me.
Go ahead, read it.
Resolution number 2016-17-27, to rescind resolution 2016-17-16, amending the Ministry of Code Creation Department of Buildings and Grounds. Whereas the Town Council wished Whereas the Town Council wished to rescind Resolution 2016-17-16, amending the Ministry of Code Creation Department of Building and Grounds, now therefore be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council. That Newmarket Town Council, that hereby rescind Resolution 2016-17-16, amending the Ministry of Code Creation Department of Building and Grounds, and let it further be resolved that Department of Buildings and Grounds shall return to as a division of the Department of Public Works. First reading, March 1st, 2017.
So, do we have a mo, so that's the?
Do I make a motion to suspend the rules at this point?
Act on it this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Nay.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, so now we go back to?
Now, I need to vote on that to rescind it. Now you're voting to rescind that.
Now we want to make a motion to actually act on this.
Yep.
Okay.
I move to approve Resolution 2016-17-27, to rescind Resolution 16-17-16.
Call, real quick.
So all this does is reset it so that nothing ever happened?
Right.
Now another resolution at some point would have to come to create whatever position the facility director?
That's the next resolution.
Which is up above.
Yep.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
So now we're back to Resolution 19?
Correct.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 16-17-19, approval of the memorandum of understanding between the town and the school for the facilities director services?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so there was, seeing no lights, there was a change, Steve, and I don't know exactly where it was. This was originally going to be, this, this facilities person was going to work for the town and do long-range planning, that's how we left it at our last meeting, correct?
Correct.
And then it was changed to, the facilities person would oversee custodial? Can you explain?
Yeah, the individual still on the town side that oversees all long-range planning has no staff reporting to them. In discussions with superintendent of schools and what was approved by the school board, was that this individual on their side would oversee two head custodians. I did reach the superintendent of schools today, and any changes to that would have to go before the school board. If, if for some reason we didn't, we eliminated that from the memorandum of understanding. The, on the flip side, when I was just thinking about this, on our side, there's no question that this individual will not be supervising anybody. But, the school can determine what they want to do with their hours for that portion of the employee. So, this is just letting us know, look, that's one of their things they're going to be looking at doing on their side. It's their hours, I guess, was what I'm looking at, as their part of the bill. But other than that, there's, that's the only change in the memorandum of understanding, except removing any supervisory portion from our side of it.
Okay, Counselor Thompson.
I guess my question is, is along the same lines. To some extent, I suppose that if we, we hire somebody, they have a job description for us. If we loan that, if and when we loan that person out to another entity, their scope could be entirely different. My problem is, no, my problem. My concern is that if this person is supervising other employees, or training them how to, I'll just pick something, mop a floor, I don't know what it is. If there is an issue, if there is an employee issue, if there is something for HR, if there's some open liability, something, he said, she said, whatever it is, ultimately, what, who handles it, who might litigate? I know this is a worst case. Are we on the hook for the performance of this person when they are contracted out to somebody else on? And admittedly, it's a shared position, so we don't know what hours a day. You know, if something happens over at the school custodial-wise, I don't, heaven forbid what happens. And we know that that person on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is working for the school, that's a little more clear-cut. It's not going to really work that way, and I'm, I'm concerned as far as ultimately where the liability is and who, who would handle something, should there, should there be any kind of an issue, whether it's physical or employee dispute, I don't know, whatever.
Yeah. Two parts, one, ultimately, this is an employee of the town. So any termination of the employee or discipline would be, rely, would rely on me. What the agreement says is that the superintendent provides input, the same way as the finance director. That, that individual's an employee of the school, they ultimately would terminate, but with input from me. Liability, the way I, is the same as?
Doing more of liability than termination, I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
What if they're accused of doing something?
Yeah.
What happens?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Contracting is, if there's something that they're doing while performing their duties at the school, their liability insurance would cover it. If it's something on the town, our liability insurance would cover it. So that's the, that's the difference. It's the, where the performance of their duties are. Don't get me wrong, we would file.
I just don't want to do any examples, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Yeah, and, and to be honest, I would.
It's really horrible, and I don't mean it that way.
If it's even on the school side, I would probably still file with their insurance, just in case. Because I'm just over cautious, I file, let them know whenever. But, that's the difference there. Same with the, the finance individual. If there was something on our side, we would file with our, any liability insurance or situation like that.
Okay.
So I have a question. The facilities director, as we discussed last time, was supposed to be long-range planning, or that was the concept, that was where it might have come to us. One of the reasons we wanted to change that was not only the bulk buildings and grounds, but because that's where we wanted their focus to be. I think we all know that they're going to be spending a lot of time working on the school if the resolution or the warrant article passes, rather, to upgrade the school. So, I guess my question is, number one, the facilities director is a, is a hire of the town, even though the school's paying two-thirds of the bill or whatever. If there is a dispute, I'm not sure, honestly, that the town, because they're not going to be overseeing, the facility director is not going to be disciplining DPW people.
Correct.
But he is theoretically going to be disciplining custodial people. Because it's going to be, they're going to be the direct report to him, apparently, based on this change, which I wish we had gotten some more information on before we just kind of got it, because I didn't know this was happening. So, I'm assuming if there was a claim or there was an issue, it would come to the, to the town and probably the school, and everybody would get named, that's number one. Number two, I'm not sure their time is best used dealing with custodians, personally. I thought we were hiring this person who's got this engineering degree and all this stuff, who's going to, again, be spending an enormous amount of time overseeing the build-out of the school. So, I would prefer leaving it the way it was, as we had agreed to last time, which was to have this person, because they're going to be working in the building, correct? And, and reporting to you?
Yes.
So, that's my opinion. Counselor Nazaro.
Are the custodians, like, functioning as like the staff through low-level, like, maintenance work on the facility?
Head custodial.
Or are they literally just, like, like cleaning people?
No, they're low-level ma, they're the head maintenance person, at least they had two custodians that had maintenance person for the building. Currently, they report to either the, the building principal, or, and again, this, I'm not the superintendent, can I remember what it is?
I know.
Or the superintendent, or the business administrator. This would take those three people out and have this person report to them.
And this person would be using them to engage in the work that is written out in the job description? Not something that's additional supervisory of?
Correct.
So they're going to be doing the work that this person plans? Okay, thank you.
You done? Counselor Pike.
Yeah, I, I, I thought it was interesting, I don't know if, it doesn't really move the argument one way or the other, but I, I think it was interesting in at least one of the school meetings, that is, that, I think there was said that the, the custodial services there have done an excellent job of working with some very old machinery, the boilers, et cetera, like that. So I, they were, you know, sometimes you wonder, you know, there was a lot of talk about the state of the buildings and stuff like that, but they were really highly complimented for, for their skills in keeping some very old infrastructure running. So I, to me, to me, I think the, I'm fine with the school having the ability to have the custodial services report directly to the person that's in charge of maintaining, making the building run and planning the building. I think that, that's not an unreasonable thing for them to do, and I think the school has been, you know, we've, whatever our process has been, we've asked the school to accommodate several changes that we asked for. And I, I don't see a need for us to get our way on everything on this, so, that's, that's just my position.
Get our way on everything, okay. Is there anyone else? I'll just say that I think it would have been nice to have been given a heads-up instead of having to change, because originally this was, wasn't the last takeaway?
No, they provided you with a copy immediately after I received it from the superintendent, which was a week ago, after the last meeting. I emailed the entire.
I thought, I thought that, that email, I didn't catch that they were doing custodial.
Yeah, this is the same document.
Okay, okay, I apologize, send it, fine. Call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Sure.
Motion passes seven zero.
Resolution 2016, do I have a motion to accept 17-20, approval of the facilities job description?
So moved.
Any questions?
Real quick, the, so we took out the aptitude and competence in supervision and training and maintenance custodial employees? Is that because this is just the town job description and there's a school one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, Counselor Thompson.
Based on we just rescinded and took away the Department of Buildings and Grounds, this current resolution, 2016-17-20, starts out, whereas the Town Council has approved the creation of a Department of Buildings and Grounds.
I'd ask for a friendly amendment to remove that.
May I, may I do so, please?
I think we couldn't amend the resolutions once it's already introduced.
So a friendly amendment to strike that entire first, whereas?
Yep.
I think that would suffice. By tow.
And, do we need a second for that?
Yeah, it's a friendly.
No, it's a friendly amendment.
I have a question, on page 54, it says, Public Works, Public Works Director, and then it says Divisions, and then it says Highways, and then you cross out Buildings and Grounds. So, I'm confused, which is 54.
That's, you've already adopted that.
Okay.
It's a different resolution.
Okay, so, okay, so answer me this, just so I know. Is Public Works, does this not imply that the Buildings and Grounds, is?
That's what we rescinded.
No, I, I.
You already did that.
Okay, so, that's back in there? Buildings and Grounds?
Buildings are back in, I gave you the old one and the new one, right.
Okay, that's fine, got it. Okay, no other questions?
I'm sorry, I missed who made the motion in a second to adopt.
I made the motion, Tony made the second, Counselor Weinstein.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Do I have a motion on page 48 to nominate, let's see?
Patrick Marsh.
Yeah, Patrick Marsh for the term expiring on 2020 for the Veterans Committee?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye, but they're, in his, um.
Yeah, the new term expiration date's wrong. It should be, it's three years, yeah.
Aye, sorry.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye, but that has to be clarified, because we've had issues with this in the past. So, when is the term expiring?
2020. March 2017, that's, so that's John.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. What did he write, the, the other one?
It's 2017, he did this.
Oh, okay, I got it, hang on, okay. So that'll get changed, because we've had issues in the past with people's terms.
Just let you know, we go by what the council makes for the motion, and Counselor Nazaro made a motion for the three-year term.
Three-year term.
Yep.
And do I have a motion, do we?
Yeah.
Assuming, do I have a motion to accept John Carmichael for, again, a three-year term for the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Can I just say, real quick, that, because this is the option for discussion, being the chair of the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee, both Patrick and John have just been great contributors with unique skillsets that have added into the committee, and I'm just honored to continue to serve with them on this committee.
And I was, just to add to that, I was really impressed with the, with the application, you know, the application by John, he took the trouble to really talk about his vision for it. I thought that was a pretty cool application.
The committee has tended, like, in, in the past, has had a period where it was like super focused on like history, and it's sort of like moved away from that, as it's focused on fundraising for the new memorial, and John, like, is like grounding us in that, like, historical aspect of the committee. I think he's like, like, him and Patrick vital.
Correct.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
I know this is past the time, but we don't have to make a motion to go past 9:00?
9:00.
Okay, just checking.
Remember those days?[1613.41]